Thank you for your patience. Bear with us, we're having some technical difficulties. We're good to go. All right. Welcome, and I call this, I'll call to order this August 13th, 2024 Hybrid Administrative Meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. We'll have a silent invocation followed by the pledge led by our Director of Animal Care, Misha Goodman, since we are recognizing animal care today, so please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Please stand and join us.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Director Goodman. Item three, announcements or changes to the agenda. Madam County Manager, are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
Madam Chair, no.
Commissioners, any changes?
Madam Chair.
Vice Chair Olivas.
I just wanted to request that we pull one item from the consent agenda, that would be item nine Q.
Nine Q, real estate, and that will be added to approvals as 12B. Any other changes? Okay, I move approval of the agenda as amended.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and all those in favor? Aye?
Aye, yes.
And we'll move on. Thank you. Item four, Count on Us Minute. Interim County Manager Shirley Reagan, are you leading this, or?
Yes. So, Madam Chair, Commissioners, the ABC School, Community School Partnership is quickly expanding to help more students and families succeed academically and in the community. This partnership of local government, including Burnaleo County and the business community, now supports more than 60 schools. In this week's Count on Us Minute, we will highlight the good work that is being done and the impact that it is making.
Thank you.
The community school strategy is simple. It creates those opportunities that students and families may not have in other spaces. It's about connecting students and their families to resources they need to improve learning and create healthier communities.
It allows us to think creatively in problem solving and addressing some really root issues that our communities face systemically.
An example, Highland High School is one of more than 60 community schools in Burnaleo County.
They've really tried to figure out different opportunities to create workforce development and transformative experiences for students, for opportunities that they have never seen before.
To create those experiences, Highland uses annual assessments to gauge student interest, as well as the needs and wants of parents, staff, and the community.
And what we discovered during that conversation is that the auto body world was in need of technicians. There is difficulty getting individuals within the community certified, very specifically to the auto body industry standard.
That led to the grand opening of the Technician Education Automotive Management Program this spring. Students are gaining hands-on experience from auto instructors, and by the end of the program, earn certification and life lessons.
It helps us work with other people. As strength in numbers is the best option. I've been grateful to do this. And currently, I have offers in the summer in which I can work in another internship down as a future focus in order to pursue this career.
We're very happy and excited for what's coming. There's a lot more coming. There's no one day that goes by that somebody is reaching out to us to be part of this amazing program.
And that's not all. Other programs offered by Highland include a school-based health center, food pantry, and a clothing bank.
They can go to it during the school day. They can also go to it after school. They can go to it before school. They can go to it during lunch. And if, for some reason, they don't have access to it at that point, they can get a referral to go back at any time.
In order to support the development of community schools and programs like this, the ABC Community School Partnership was established. That's where Burnco and its many partners come in.
It's really important, I think, that we have this structure of the Community School Board, the ABC Community School Partnership Board, because it creates this wonderful sustainability that we may not have otherwise.
An important collaboration of local government and business support that has proven to be vital to our community.
These kids help the community, which helps my industry, and it all just kind of starts to rotate and help each other.
When I started in community schools way back in 2012, there were only four. I think the reason it's growing is because we see it's working, because we see that it is needed. Teachers feel less stress, there's more structure, there's more support for students.
Wonderful, thank you. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item five. Proctor, oh, yes, Vice Chair Olivas.
I just wanted to say quickly on this item, I wanted to recognize Jake Miraball, who's the, are you the new director now? Okay, okay, just making sure. And we also have DCM Townsend, that's been just instrumental and absolutely passionate about this, you know, glad to see that she's in a role to continue to support community schools. I'm honored to sit on this board along with Commissioner Casada, and a lot of good work is happening here, and just glad that this was highlighted for us all tonight.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I was just gonna quickly say, also, thank you, Madam Chair. Quickly, thank you, same folks, and just, I'm glad you highlighted Highland, but what a great program and 60 community schools. That's huge. Thank you for the work and hope it continues. Important asset to make sure our teachers can teach while we have wraparound services for students and their families, so thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I've been involved in this for a long, long time. And so even when I sat on the school board, community schools was very important to me. The data shows, so a lot of people, you know, they want, they want to see the data, and the data is outstanding, and it really pointed us in the right direction, and that was my passion when I came here, to make sure that the wraparound services is, I think, the big, kind of missing piece to what we're doing at schools. And so I'm very excited about the mobile units coming out, and the third one coming out, but I think that's just a little dent into what we think we should be doing for the wraparound services. But what a great video, kind of really highlights the success of how successful school could be if it's, if it's wrapped around the whole community. I think we get lost somewhere where we think we just drop our kids off at school and they're responsible for their education, and I think this model shows you that you are responsible for your children's education. APS is there to assist you in that endeavor, and that's what community schools teaches, community, and so I'm very proud to be a part of that. And I'll continue to always support it even when I'm not sitting up here. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, now we move on to proclamation. Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Tamara, if you, if you're here, is she here? Yeah, would you come up for a second? Oh, and look, you got a dog. All right, my wife's not gonna let me take the dog, Tamara, because I've got four, and I'm, I'm right now currently feeding six cats that I've adopted, but they're feral, so they're outside. But it's great, it's a great honor to read this to you today. This is a recognition to Tamara Nugent. For your outstanding work, love, and dedication to the animals of Burnaleo County, Tamara Nugent is a business owner and resident of the South Valley. For over the past 10 years, Tamara Nugent has been assisting Burnaleo County Animal Care Services in rescuing and placing animals in need. Many of those animals were elderly, scared, or suffered from severe medical conditions. Ms. Nugent has sought and funded any necessary treatment for the animals she has rescued, and has been very successful in finding them forever homes. She has been a pleasure to work with over the years, and we hope to continue working with her for many more years to come. Thank you, Tamara, for your commitment to Burnaleo County Animal Care Services and the animals we serve. Presented this day, August 13th, 2024. If you would say a few words, that would be awesome.
I've always been an advocate for the county. I take in mostly end-of-life and seniors, and I'm a retired groomer, so I go, always have my grooming bag and go help them out. So I've been a very strong advocate for them for many years.
Well, I just want to personally thank you for what you do. I think I found myself loving animals more than anything else these days, but I don't think people really know the need until you get involved at some level with what we're dealing with, when it, when it means to taking care of our animals here in Burnaleo County. And if I could clone you, I would, because the need is that great, but, you know, just from the bottom of my heart, thank you for what you do, and I know that you will get paid back tenfold.
Well, I'm always willing to teach new people if they want to learn how to do it.
And I'm glad they're listening, and I hope they hear you. So thank you.
So we brought you something special, because you fix them all up. So we brought you a Burnco, it's not a dog, it's a bear, but.
Oh, thank you.
It's chronically injured.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I have another one that's losing a leg Thursday. That came from, it was dumped in an intersection. And so they brought her back to life, and because she was so neglected, the growth plates didn't work in the leg and grow properly, so she's gotta lose her leg Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Come up and, come up and receive your.
Here's your, here's your certificate of recognition, and we would love to take a picture with you, if that's okay. Okay.
Item 5B, Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is our Animal Care Services team here?
Looks like it.
Come on down. Excellent. Glad you all could be here tonight. We just want to acknowledge you all here tonight officially. So, the Burnaleo County Animal Care Services Emergency Response Team, we extend our heartfelt gratitude to the dedicated team at Burnaleo County Animal Care Services for their swift and compassionate response during the South Fork and salt fires in southern New Mexico. By establishing and managing an emergency animal shelter, they provided essential care and support to over 50 displaced animals, demonstrating their unwavering commitment to animal welfare and community service. The impact of these fires on the Ruidoso area was significant, and the team's prompt actions in providing shelter, supplies, and comfort to both animals and their owners underscore their professionalism and preparedness as a recognized emergency response organization. Their efforts went beyond the call of duty, ensuring the safety and well-being of animals in crisis, and offering solace to owners facing distressing circumstances. Their dedication and compassion during this challenging time are deeply appreciated by all those they assisted. It is with appreciation and pride that the Burnaleo County Board of Commissioners honors and recognizes this team consisting of Benjamin Silva, Animal Care Field Services Manager, Christina Waldrop, Program Facilitator, Diane Wilder, Program Facilitator, Edith Wilson, Animal Care Officer One, Vicente Duran, Animal Care Officer One, and your entire team. And please pass this along to the entire team. Thank you, and we'd love to hear from you.
Thank you, Commissioner Benson. It was challenging, but a needed, and, you know, the situation wasn't exciting, but it's exciting for us to, to get out and help the community, not just of Burnaleo County, but, but statewide, in assisting in animal care needs, which are often go overlooked in these type of emergency situations. And yeah, thank, thank you guys for the acknowledgement.
Yeah, thank you, and for your leadership, taking care of non-Burnaleo County residents, just as leaders in the community. And, and you're right, it's an area that a lot of people don't think of unless you're a pet owner, and you realize how distressing it can be if there's an emergency.
Yeah, I wanted to add that this team gets up and going within an hour or two with all the equipment and everything they need to set up, and is really amazing. This is just a portion of the team that we send, but they leave their families for days and go and take care of others, so that other people can be safe and their animals can be safe too. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Goodman, and I also want to thank you all personally. I mean, Commissioner Benson, thank you for bringing this forward. Our animals are part of our family, and I'm sure if Lola's watching tonight, woof, you know, she's happy that we're recognizing you, so thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
Can we have a picture?
Yes, please come on. Thank you all. Item six, Board and Committee Appointments. We'll start with 6A Behavioral Health Division, DCM Dr. Wayne Lindstrom.
Madam Commissioner, and members of the Commission, good to be with you this evening. I have five candidates to present to you for your consideration for the Behavioral Health Advisory Board, per your recently passed Behavioral Health Ordinance. But before getting to that, I wanted to give you just some highlights of the progress made to date since the passage of the ordinance. The first that benefits me greatly is I now have an executive assistant. Her name is Brandy Arndt, and so I have somebody now to keep my work-life organized, which I'm very much grateful for. She's been a blessing. She's now been on board. This is her third week. Secondly, our COO, Julianne Baca, posted on the Burnco web portal each of the new advisory boards that are proposed, they're not proposed, but enacted in the ordinance relative to the new Behavioral Health Authority, and that being the Behavioral Health Advisory Board, the Education Awareness Board, and the Technical Advisory Council. So all three of those are posted. We have received 19 applications to date. Two of those reside in Sandville County and could not be considered and will not be moving forward. Four of the applications are candidates for the Addiction Treatment Advisory Board, and we have forwarded those on to the board for their consideration. We have four appointments to the Behavioral Health Advisory Board pending that we will present to you at your next regularly scheduled commission meeting. We have in addition sent out recruitment letters to a variety of the sectors that are spelled out in the ordinance relative to having representation. So we think with the few remaining seats that we have, that we may have those filled, or at least have candidates for your consideration at the next meeting. In addition to that, we have one applicant for the Education Awareness Council. We have begun and are well along in a reorganization process of integrating BHI and the care campus into the new division, and have had a reorganization team working on that to affect all the functional entities within county government to make that happen. We also have a draft organizational chart that we will be sharing with you shortly as well. We have the position of. We have the position of a senior program coordinator that will function per the working group, reporting directly to me, that will assist with strategic planning as well as liaison with the three new advisory entities, as well as others that we have relationships with. We will be presenting to you a resolution in September with regards to this new structure and with rescinding the previous administrative resolution regarding the old structure. So, that will be coming as well. And by tomorrow morning, I'm anticipating receiving a proposal for a contractor that we've used, and I think really produces a high-quality product, has experience in strategic planning, to get our strategic plan to you in time for the November thirtieth deadline specified in the ordinance. So, with that, let me move the five candidates forward. The first one is Maria Fernanda Ferrer Hernandez. She is the Clinical Supervisor at Centro Sevilla, Villa, excuse me, and she will be a Provider Representative. Second is Andrew Estocine, who's a professional project manager and currently serves as a Deputy Project Manager for the Enterprise Project Manager Office of CYFD. And he's being presented as the Housing Representative, which may sound strange given his current position. However, he is the former Deputy Director of the Albuquerque Housing Authority and has also served as a Housing Asset Specialist with the New Mexico Mortgage Finance Authority. The third candidate is Kimberly Montgomery, who's with the Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative, and she's an administrator there, and she is the Proposed Youth Services Representative. Fourth is Holly Mel, who is an attorney with the Disability Rights New Mexico, and she'll be the Disability Rights Candidate. And lastly is Alex Ross Reed, who's Executive Director of the Health Equity Alliance, representing an LGBTQ representative. So, with that, I propose those for your consideration.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any questions or discussion? Vice Chair Levis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, DCM Lindstrom, for just absolutely hitting the ground running. I can see it, you're passionate about what you do, but you're also effective about what you do. And just excited to see all the progress you've already made in basically one month's time with the ordinance being on the books and getting these boards and committees and councils staffed quickly with some really well-qualified applicants. I'm excited about the direction that things are moving. And just want to thank you and all of your great staff in BHI and DBHS in the new Behavioral Health Authority for their work and what you're doing here.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Deputy Project Manager Lindstrom. I've just been so excited, thank you for this update, exactly what I wanted to hear. I know when I first saw that there was candidates coming through, I got right away worried, like, oh, I have my own opinion about things. But I got to see this great list of candidates and such great expertise. I'm so glad this is our first set coming through. Thankfully, I read through their resumes, definitely well-qualified, going to make really strong advisory to help advise you and our new division. Very thankful for the update and excited to see this, thankful for your presence at all the meetings that we've been able to have around behavioral health and how that's working out. So, yes, thanks for moving quickly and getting this in place.
Thank you, I'll reserve updates with regards to our other strategic plan and the opioid settlement monies relative to your next session.
Any other comments? I just want to end by thanking you, Dr. Lindstrom, very much. Again, as the Vice Chair said, just hit the ground running and keep up the race.
Thank you.
Moving forward. So, with that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thanks again.
Thank you. Item seven, Public Comment and Communications. Each person will have two minutes, and you will be alerted about your remaining time. When your name is called, please make your way to the podium if you are speaking in person. Before making your statements, please state your name for the record. To maintain order and decorum, and in the spirit of professionalism and respect, we ask that everyone adhere to the two-minute time frame. Julianne, can you read the names, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have eight speakers signed up this evening. We'll start off with Mr. Don Schrader, followed by Dr. Gerardo Cionello, followed by Mary Ingham.
Don Schrader. Smedley Butler was a U.S. Marine for thirty-three years, eighteen ninety-eight to nineteen thirty-one. Smedley Butler became a Major General, the Marines' highest rank at that time. Four years after he retired, Smedley Butler wrote, "He had been a gangster for U.S. capitalism, robbing Mexico, Haiti, Cuba, Nicaragua, Honduras, Dominican Republic, China." He wrote the book War is a Racket. He said, "For a great many years, I had a suspicion that war was a racket. Not until I retired to civil life did I fully realize it." Smedley Butler closed his book with "To Hell With War." A World War II veteran said he had daily nightmares remembering the faces of young German soldiers he saw in the crosshairs just before he exploded their faces and heads. He could not get rid of those images. A soldier who received a Congressional Medal of Honor told his son that if he ever got into battle to allow himself to be killed rather than live the hell of the memory of killing another human being. When would it be right for any nation to murder our families? If never, how can it be right for the United States to murder their families?
Gerardo Cionello, followed by Mary Ingham, followed by Stuart Ingham.
Good evening, Madam Chair and County Commissioners. How do we stop this border crisis? Some, as most of you know, I waited nine years legally to become a naturalized U.S. citizen. According to U.S. government data, some eight million-plus people have illegally entered the U.S. from twenty twenty-one, twenty-four, plus another two million which are the gotaways, the ones seen by border agents but never apprehended, and the ones who entered the country through other ways. That ten million illegals in three years since Biden was inaugurated president. And they'll keep coming if we continue our current policies. But the overwhelming majority are coming for a much more obvious reasons, to work and make money in the world's richest country. And not just from Mexico or Central America, but from China, Iran, Iraq, Syria, Afghanistan, Somalia, Venezuela, and so on. And many are coming for the wrong reason, they are fighting males ages eighteen to thirty, ready to destroy our U.S. economy, infrastructures, and commit crimes, sex slavery, human drug trafficking, et cetera. Illegal immigration has been a major issue in the U.S. It's one of the reasons Trump was elected in twenty sixteen. He extended the border wall, which were hampered by liberal judges and Democratic Congress. He instituted a Remain in Mexico policy, which forced migrants to wait for asylum claims and fully empowered border and immigration agents to detain, deport, and expel illegal immigrants back across the border. But when the Biden administration took over in twenty twenty-one, border agents became like Walmart greeters. Deportation officers were chained to their desks, most everyone who showed up was guaranteed entry. And once they achieved that goal, then what? They had to house, fed, cared for, especially when sick. And I haven't even mentioned the billions of dollars that all this cost us, the American taxpayer. Can we stop this historic flood? Yes, by reversing the risk-reward calculus, and it's up to us, and may God bless you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cionello.
Mary Ingham, followed by Stuart Ingham, followed by Rudolph Serano.
Good evening. I just wanted to read something from the New Mexico Constitution. The Constitution of the State of New Mexico adopted January twenty-first, nineteen eleven. The preamble states, "We, the people of New Mexico, grateful to Almighty God for the blessings of liberty, in order to secure the advantages of a state government, do ordain and establish this constitution." And just a reminder, we've been to several of the meetings with the opioid monies that have come in. And just for all of us to consider that the church and faith-based groups, that's where a lot of the healing and the curing of what's happening to people. And we've recently read an article about, well, it was actually a video we watched of a woman who had a drug addiction herself and has found as a provider for many years of people suffering with drug addiction that they healed much more quickly and that their treatment was much shorter with a faith-based system. So, I just want us all to consider that, thank you.
Thank you.
Stuart Ingham, followed by Rudolph Serano, followed by Moises Gonzalez.
Hello, Madam Chair, my name is Stuart Ingham. I just want to relate to you guys our experience. We have a son who is engaged in opioid crisis. He was during some time in jail, he was offered methadone to help him sleep. And so, when he got done with his prison time, he immediately had to go and be at a methadone clinic every morning to get his methadone. And he did that for six months and did pretty well, but reality was, he hit the wall once, and then he fell off the wagon. We got him back after several weeks, and he was mandated to go to the treatment center on Zuni, I can't remember the name of it, care unit, where they introduced him to some other programs. We had our probation, or the parole officer give us a required program that we had to go to, which was completely incompetent. They couldn't maintain their own schedule, let alone get with him. Offered him a new substitute to do the suboxone treatments protocol. And as my wife just said, he's now back on the street, back using again. And the treatment program was absolutely useless. So, when we are looking at spending money on treatment programs, many of these programs are somebody's idea without any proof of their worth, and they just end up being a waste of time and money. So, I would ask that you would do much to avoid our expenditures on these treatment programs. Thank you.
Rudolph Serano, followed by Moises Gonzalez, followed by J.J. Herrera.
Madam Chair, back members of the, of these chambers. Last time, I streamed a little bit, but I'm sorry, but I have to put up with thirty minutes of that at my home. And you know where I live, in front of the Lame Keys, you know, giving a big show. But I do want that investigated, but I pretty much will have the FBI do that, so don't worry about it. I didn't recognize you in the library, you looked ten years younger, so we all needed a break, you know? What I did recognize is that we have the same, you know, style of doing things and putting all this money back into drugs. And I was hearing the representative was talking about this new drug, this new Shiva that stays three days in your body and keeps you high for three days, and it's going to cure us and everything. And I'm challenging you not to try it, but not for the rest of their lives. You know, we have to put a top six-month for treatment, and that's it. And I don't know if you noticed the Olympics, there was no Hispanics presence, but only like one percent of our population. And that's an embarrassment for us that, you know, try to push the people to sports, and we don't have an Olympic pool, we don't have a word to jump, you know? Cuba does better than us, that's embarrassing, and we can do better than that. I think we closed the programs two years ago, I was hearing. Maybe we can open those, we can think, you know, getting those monies for an Olympic pool. I bet you nobody's going to complain, I'm one of the victims. I won't complain if you put in an Olympic pool and think about your goods. And, well, we're back, and I'll see you here again, and hopefully in a better tone. Thank you.
My name is Moises Gonzalez, resident Carnwell, Chair and members of the County Commission. I'm here to ask for your support for the request by Levis for two point five million to also provide some magic money for the Carnival wastewater project. It's very important to us. We're still, it's been, we've been working on it for many years, I'm connecting the water system. Be great to have other residents to be able to have connected that system. We have many failing wells and septic tanks, so we're one of the oldest, we are the oldest community in the East Mountains, so we hope to be able to stay living there. So, all your support is for every member of this commission throughout and past commissions, just the continued support that you have, and we really appreciate the requests by Commissioner Levis, Vice Chair Levis. Also, later on is the approval for the funding for the expansion of Los Vecinos Community Center. Very well-utilized facility, we'd like to continue to support that as a resident Carnwell. And some facility that I use in the winter, the pickleball courts, I've been playing part of the, playing there in the winter, so expanding that to being able to play in the outside. So, very, very much would appreciate the expansion of those facilities, just as many East Mountain residents, and thank you.
J.J. Herrera, followed by Daniel Casey.
Hello, my name is J.J. Herrera, also President of the Canyon de Carnival Land Grant. I'm also, thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners, for your consideration for the two point five million dollars for this water project. It is hugely important to us, and I thank you for all the continued support that you've given us. And this project is so important for us because even with this wet summer that we've had, wells are still drying up. I mean, I'm asked at least once a week, hey, you know, where is this going? And so, we're really happy that there could possibly be funding more for this project, and it's hugely important to us. I thank you for your consideration as well. Also, with Los Vecinos, I went there as a kid. I'm a little jealous of the skate park because I wish it was there when I was there. But I think it's hugely important also to keep our kids in the East Mountains. I know there's so many families that are moving away, and we want to give them something to do and keep these kids occupied, doing something fun and keep them out of the streets. So, I do appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Daniel Casey.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners, my name is Danielle Casey. I'm the President and CEO with the Albuquerque Regional Economic Alliance. And I just wanted to make some positive comments. I'm very excited, a little bit of an early congratulations to encourage you to move forward the inducement resolution for Project Apollo this evening, which we now know as Ebon Solar. This is, and when I say congratulations, so many partners have put in hundreds of hours of due diligence and work on this project, which represents significant investment, potential investment into the greater Albuquerque region and the community areas. Been there every step of the way since January, we've been working very hard on it. Economic development is very competitive. And as you all know, we have challenges with infrastructure costs and other land costs in our community. So, an industrial revenue bond can be a critical component to allow us to win projects like these and bring, what's really important, the jobs to the community. So, this project is bringing nine hundred direct jobs, but the additional induced jobs that we will likely see if it comes to fruition with all of the components, there's a lot of work to do still, of course. There's a lot of work to do still, of course, is going to spin off another thousand jobs plus for the community. Average wages are around $80,000, which is incredible. And there is also, even for the entry level positions, true career advancement and opportunities in this renewable energy sector. So I just think it's amazing. We've got wonderful eyes on us nationally. The due diligence that has happened with all the teams and the consultants on this project has been extensive. And I look forward to it moving forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Casey. Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes public comment.
Thank you all. Okay, we move on to item eight, approval of minutes. I move approval of the June 25, 2024 administrative meeting minutes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, aye?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
That passes. And we move to item nine, the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, please provide resolution numbers for items nine B, nine N, M, O, P, and J.
Yes, ma'am. Nine B is AR 2024-87. Nine M is AR 2024-88. N, AR 2024-89. O, AR 2024-90. P is AR 2024-91.
And we also need J.
Madam Chair and Madam Clerk, if we can...
We moved it, didn't we?
Did we move the opioid or did we move, we didn't move the opioid after all? So we have to order that, number them in the order there.
Okay, then we need backup. Mine says added to. So, all right, let's go back up to J, Madam Chair. And we'll make that FR 2024-88.
Yeah, thank you.
M is AR 2024-89. N is AR 2024-90. O is 91, AR 2024-91. And P is AR 2024-92.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
So I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second, Madam Chair.
It's been moved and seconded. Commissioner Benson.
I just want to give a notice to A.J. McQuay. He's my appointment to the Arts Board. And I just want to thank him for his application. He's replacing Ms. Tina Tomlin, who's been a valuable member of that board. And from everything I hear from the board, they're going to miss her greatly. But I look forward to A.J. If you notice his resume, it's very technical. He's, he's more of a STEM guy by profession, but his personal life, he is very artistic. So I just want to say thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Benson. Commissioner Barbola and then Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I also just want to recognize I have several appointments. Most of them are reappointments, folks that have been serving. So I just wanted to recognize Kimberly Apodaca, who's in the audience today, comes with a wealth of experience, passion, and was really grateful to be considered for this. So I thank you for your service and look forward to hearing from you and working with you.
Thank you. Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I also want to thank and congratulate William Walker. Although he is a retired firefighter, he will be serving at the, on the Sheriff's Office Advisory and Review Board. And just something I wanted to say, be careful when you run for office because if you don't get elected, then I come after you and make sure you sit on boards and committees in my district. And so, you know, I'm, I'm excited because we're always looking for people who want to go beyond and really be involved in the community. And William Walker decided and has taken that leap forward. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the consent agenda passes. Item 10, adoption of ordinance amendment to county code. Madam Clerk, can you please provide ordinance numbers for 10A?
Ordinance 2024-18.
And Director Ham.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, good evening. Nicholas Ham, Director of Planning and Development Services for the County, joined tonight by Don Ray, the County's Building Official, back here for hopeful adoption of the update to the Burnley County Building Code. These are updates to chapter 10 of the County's Code. Proposed changes will create consistency between County and State of New Mexico Construction Industries Division, as well as the City of Albuquerque for construction materials and methods. The versions we are seeking to adopt for this, tonight's action would be the 2021 ICC Commercial and Residential Codes, the 2021 ICC Energy Code, the 2023 National Electric Code, and the 2021 IATMO Plumbing and Mechanical Codes. These will allow the County to use contemporary standards for construction and make it easier for designers and contractors, not having to sort of pick and choose which codes they use as they navigate our sister municipality and other areas in the state. So with that, I'll stand for any questions and appreciate your support.
Any questions of Director Ham?
I move for approval. Second.
We, we first need to proceed, sorry, to a, to a public hearing if there's anyone here to speak to the...
Thank you, Madam Chair. There is no signups for the public hearing.
Thank you. And we'll go to a...
Move for approval. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item 11, adoption of resolutions. Madam Clerk, can you please provide resolution numbers for 11A and B?
Yes, ma'am. 11A is AR 2024-93. 11B is AR 2024-94. 11C is FR 2024-95.
And C, okay. Julianne, did you have a comment? Okay, okay. So 11A, Chair, Vice Chair Olivas.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I'm so excited to be sponsoring this item. This project is, is just what I think is an example of what we're supposed to be doing in government, helping our communities, working to bring, you know, needed basic infrastructure, basic utilities like water and sewer service to our residents. In this case, these are really some of our most historic, culturally rich, diverse in every way. The, the Carnwell Land Grant, you heard President Herrera and Mr. Gonzalez talk a little bit about the challenges they face. But I think it's, it's important to start just by saying, remember, this is one of our original seven land grants. There's only two of them that are, that are truly still in active operation today. Both of them are in my district, Carnwell and Chilili. Very proud to have these, these land grants in my district. But they need some help. And in this case, Carnwell, it, if you're familiar with the area, of course, it is geologically challenged, right? This is in the Tejeras Canyon. We have granite bedrock and other geologic features that, that really make septic systems very problematic in that area. And of course, that also makes well service, water service problematic. So it's a beautiful part of our, of our county, of our region. But it's not the best part to be mixing water and wastewater when you're, when you're talking about pumping water underground. So put in that, also we have climate change and, you know, just a higher population density growing area in our, in our region. It's just a couple of minutes outside of the city. They've got a big challenge. There's, there's really big challenges out there with water, access to water, if you can get it at all, and the quality of that water, right? If it's mixing with sewer water, nitrates, those kinds of things really can be a, a public safety hazard. So Burnley County, through our Public Works Division, has been working with the Albuquerque-Burnley County Water Utility on this project for probably the better part of a decade now, if not more than that, working to expand water and wastewater service from the city system into Carnwell, because it is not that far out of, out of the city. But the county has been a strong funding partner, securing federal funds, state funds, ARPA funds over the last number of years. And so this is yet another notch in that belt for us. And what I think is unique about this is to date, we've really funded this in much smaller pieces. So we've received some capital outlay money from legislators, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars here and there. Senator Heinrich was actually just able to secure $1.2 million for this project that will be moving into it shortly. We've also been very grateful to Governor Lujan Grisham for contributing $2 million of her capital outlay funding last year to the project. So those are, are larger amounts than, than the couple hundred thousand we've kind of been existing on. There's also been some, some ARPA funding appropriated to this. But this funding here has the potential to fund a much larger phase. Even though we're only talking about $2.5 million from the county, this will be leveraged through a state water trust board application that could bring in anywhere between 10 and 15 million dollars, depending on sort of the minutia of what happens at the state level. So this is a huge opportunity to leverage our local funds for much more funding for this project. And of course, for our residents out there, the importance of those larger chunks of funding are, A, of course, we can, we can do more with it. But B, we can also be more efficient when we're talking about potentially coupling water and wastewater together. We know that they need to happen together. If you're tearing up the street, ideally we don't want to tear it up one time, right? Why would you want to go back, pay to tear it up and put it back two times? It doesn't make sense. So this larger amount of funding potentially sets us up for a situation where we can do more and do it together, smarter and more effective and faster for the community. So I'm really grateful to, to be sponsoring this. I, I hope that all of my colleagues will see that this is not just the right thing to do for, for these residents, for this historic community, but it's the smart thing to do. This is going to leverage state funding, bring state funds into our county at a very high level, making this, I think, just a win-win situation. So with that, I would like to move for approval.
I'll second that. Any other comments? Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, as a, as a Burnley County Commissioner, one of the biggest jobs I've had is infrastructure. That's basically at a high level of what we do here in Burnley County. When I first was elected, we, we had no city water in Los Palacios, one of, another, you know, historic neighborhood here in, in Burnley County. And, and so I don't think you realize until you go into somebody's home and turn on their spigot and brown stuff comes out, where you realize that just the basic needs and necessities that we take for granted, some people don't have. And I 100% support this. We're always having to improve the quality of life. And water, as we all know, is the number one resource that we need in order to thrive as a community. So I 100% support this. And I'm, I'm grateful that this is moving forward. And I'm grateful that it's even, has the opportunity to get a lot more funding, which it, which it needs. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Benson.
I want to start by saying this is a good project. Carnwell needs clean water. The pollution to their groundwater is a problem. The access to water with dropping water tables is a problem. I do have a question on the, the 2.5 million dedication from Burnley County. And I agree with Commissioner Casada that, that part of our job is developing infrastructure. Is this local match, just to clarify, is that match being matched by the Water Utility Authority?
Vice Chair Olivas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Benson, short answer is no. Because the Water Utility Authority has a no net expense policy, which prohibits it from spending any of its resources from its existing rate base to expand its service territory, the water utility is, is not allowed to contribute funds to this. However, they do contribute, of course, their great technical expertise in preparing the application, in running all of the, the contracts and construction and engineering and all of the, you know, the, the details that go into this. So I don't minimize that contribution. That is a real contribution to the project and, and to the success of the project. But no, they do not have a direct financial contribution.
Thank you. I would just suggest being on the, serving on the utility board, that, that they amend that because they will be responsible for the maintenance of this later. But they'll also generate the revenue from this, from the, the users in the system. That being said, it is, these are our residents and this is infrastructure that they need. And so I support our funding. But it would be nice if they also put in, and we'd be happy to match with technical expertise also, obviously. But, but just having the financial skin in the game as well, moving forward in, in additional projects. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments? Commissioner Casada.
Yeah, Madam Chair, Vice Chair Olivas, would, would the Water Utility Authority be able to, like they did in Los Palacios, do some of the work, which would probably might mitigate some of the cost? I know, I know that's what helped me get through Los Palacios. I know they couldn't give me the funding for it to expand it. But they did help me do the work, which was, made the cost, you know, considerably a little cheaper. I'm just throwing that out there as maybe a suggestion on, on parts of it. I, I understand that. It's not as easy to, to put water as it is in Los Palacios, as it is in, in Carnwell. But perhaps that's something you can look at.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And both to Commissioner Benson and Casada, your, your points are duly noted and appreciated. And I, I do think to Commissioner Casada's suggestion that, that is already the case with some of the, you know, engineering and consulting and all the things that they're doing already. They're out on the ground, meeting with property owners and negotiating easements and doing all those kinds of things that we would otherwise be paying a contractor or, you know, some other entity to do. And so I know that they're, they're fully committed to that. And, and I'm, I'm sure that they're pursuing a, that this, this whole project is modeled after the South Valley Drinking Water Project and its huge success there that you've, of course, been a part of. So I think they're, they're an amazing partner for this and on so many projects. And it, and it does bring to mind one other thing. Where they are an active financial participant is in the pipe program, which was also used and modeled in the South Valley to fund connections for low-income residents, residents that can't afford the services. There is a, don't quote me that it's a 50/50 match, but the utility and the county both contribute to this fund that then allows it to make grants to those residents that, that need it to get connected to the system. So there is that piece of the, the financial contribution. But I, I do appreciate both of your suggestions.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
And that passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Item 11B, economic development. The Economic Development Manager Carolyn Tobias will present.
Good evening, Carolyn Tobias, Economic Development Manager. Madam Chair and members of the Commission, the Economic Development Staff requests approval for an inducement resolution in connection with the proposed Project Apollo, Ebon Solar, located within Burnley County, New Mexico, inducing Ebon Solar to construct, acquire, and install equipment and other personal property in the manner set forth in their project plan. The development will be completed over two phases with an aggregate $942 million of total capital investment over a period of approximately six years. The industrial revenue bonds would provide certain tax exemptions to defray part of the cost of the project. As Danielle Casey mentioned earlier, the project is a collaboration with the State of New Mexico Economic Development Department and the City of Albuquerque Economic Development. As a solar chip manufacturer, Ebon Solar will be in addition to the advanced manufacturing and renewable industry that we already have growing across Burnley County, with an expected 911 jobs created in the next 10 years. And I will stand for any questions.
Any question, Mr. Tobias? Commissioner Barbola.
Thank you. And I thank you for the briefing. I just do want the public to also hear the answers to the questions I'd asked you during our previous briefing around how do New Mexicans have access to these jobs? What's the pathway? And is that the goal? And what's the local partnerships?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioner Barbola. So workforce development is a question that we dive into as we vet the IRB application. And it's something that we will continue to question the company on. And we'll be able to present in more detail their specific plans for that path of improvement and upskilling and so on in, when we bring it back for ordinance. when we bring it back for ordinance.
Thank you. And then last also, so please yes that to that. Thank you for that. And oftentimes, like, it's so interesting to me that we're getting these great things for climate, solar energy, when we talk solar energy, but oftentimes it takes also a lot of water and clean water to do that. Can you tell us what the plans for this project and use of waters?
Yes, Madam Chair and Commissioner Barboia. We are partnering with our utilities on every project, but particularly the Albuquerque-Burnaleo County Water Utility Authority is a partner. And we are currently in discussion with them and the developer on infrastructure, specifically with water. They have included in their application a lot of the treatment plans and the ways in which they plan to be sustainable that is incorporated into the discussion and into the consideration of the application. So we will know more as discussions with the Water Utility develop.
Thank you. And I'd like, I'd love to have that information before we vote for final approval. And just since I know I love our area person that I know usually. But I think, you know, for a lot of these, again, we're trying to create, you know, clean energy on one hand. I want to, I would love if we just sort of get in the practice. And the workforce development for me stuff is always going to be an important question. And I think it might be a leverage for some of these companies before we get to this point, to say like, that we really need to hear about, you know, their plans ahead of time for how they make sure that these jobs that we're talking about are jobs for New Mexicans, that New Mexicans can access. Thank you. Thank you for the information.
Ms. Tobias, I have a follow-up to Commissioner Barboia. So this has been introduced today. We're not voting for approval yet. My question is, could this be taken before the Water Utility Authority Board prior to coming back to Burnaleo County for approval?
Madam Chair.
So that we can dig, sorry to interrupt, but so that there can be the deep dive conversation into the water availability and impact on our water.
Madam Chair, just to clarify, your question is, will the IRB application go before the Water Utility Authority?
Or just as an agenda item before the Water Utility Authority Board to discuss this in open public forum about water?
Madam Chair, that is my understanding that with all of our projects, as we're in discussion with the utilities, that those items are brought forth before their board for consideration. So this is in the introduction phase. And so it's early stages of those conversations, but they are actively happening. And the company in question and all of our partners are at the table.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Benson.
I just want to make a comment. Thank you so much for bringing this forward. I'm super excited about it. And I do want to talk about the jobs and fully agree with Commissioner Barboia on the importance of job creation and development here for New Mexico residents. But I also want to point out the long-term aspect and benefit this brings to the community. That first, we are opening jobs to our local residents. So it's just one more opportunity for our local residents to stay here if they're so qualified. But a secondary benefit is to bring outside residents to New Mexico in support of the business, not because that's our goal, but it becomes a secondary benefit. And then in the long term, though, is that you start growing your population and tax base and job base. And then if it's a good business partner, they set up roots and they're contributing to the local schools and property taxes. And second and third generation employees just automatically become, whether they started out as New Mexicans or not, by the second and third iteration of that role, typically, they are New Mexicans. And that's what excites me about economic development. And thank you so much, and Ms. Casey, for your role. You work so hard behind the scenes to bring opportunities like this before us that it takes a lot of work, so thank you. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, thank you for highlighting that. I will add, as part of areas process, when businesses approach the state of New Mexico for relocation, workforce development is right up there in something that both we ask of them, but then they're also asking of New Mexico. Can New Mexico support? If we bring these many jobs, are there people going to be here in order to fill those jobs? And so those conversations happen even before they come to us. But to your point, there is ongoing integration and invitation with both CNM, UNM, and our education partners on a path forward whenever we bring a project to the commission.
Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I have a couple of questions. Where are they from? Where are they coming in from?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Casada, Ebon Solar are based in Singapore, or their subsidiary, they're a United States subsidiary of a Singapore-based company, Ebon Technologies.
And that's what I wanted to know. Because I think thanks to President Biden and CHIPS Act, we have a lot of these companies coming back to the United States. And I just want to let everybody know that we don't have a lot of this kind of manufacturing happening here. So yeah, you're going to set up where you think you can have the workforce to do it. Because you just don't have that workforce in the United States at this point. The people who know how to do this work at this point are most likely in other countries. So I think it's a great opportunity to give that kind of training and those types of jobs to New Mexicans. I don't think you can bring people in from Singapore or Mexico or China or Thailand. This is the kind of industry that has to be rebuilt from the ground up here in New Mexico. And so I can't see that this would bring people from out of state to do the work, but actually provide those jobs here in New Mexico. And I know for a fact from the neighborhoods I grew up in, these types of opportunities change a family's trajectory and breaks the cycle of poverty in a way. And yes, there's give and take in everything. Water is extremely important to us. That is something that's going to be probably the hardest consideration to make as we move forward, and as it should be. But I appreciate the work. And I'm hoping that this comes to fruition. Because we're just at the beginning stages. And I know there's a lot of moving parts and a lot of different players. Sometimes things fall through when that happens. I'm just going to stay positive that that is, and it becomes a beacon of change for the community here, and especially the people, you know, in underserved communities that don't normally have opportunities for growth. So thank you.
Vice Chair Olivas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to point out with this, first of all, that one big difference in this application versus the sort of sister application with Maxion is really the salary levels in this are significantly higher, particularly those entry-level salaries. So sitting in the $60,000 range that I believe these are at, sort of at the low end, is, to me, a really different position than what we saw in Maxion, which is a big reason why I hesitated on that one. Because we had some jobs in there that were in the $30,000 to $40,000 range, which are jobs that I think we know are going to require further government subsidy on sort of the social safety net side and other things like that. So, you know, when I'm looking at a transaction like that, you have to kind of ask yourself, are those actually worth what they're bringing here? This one, I think, is much more of a no-brainer in that jobs piece. Because I think these are all jobs that are self-sustaining, for the most part. This is a salary that you can generally live on here. It's a fairly comfortable living. And as you said, there's opportunity for advancement. So I think this is a really well-rounded company, project proposal, whatever you want to call it, because of that floor is much higher. And I really hope that we can, you know, I know we don't get to necessarily choose who comes to us looking to expand, but I really hope we can focus on projects like this that bring in that, you know, mid-to-high-end range jobs that don't require us to put in further subsidy on the backend. And I wanted to follow up on Madam Chair's point about water. And I still really haven't heard an endpoint on the water situation for Maxion, which, you know, my understanding is there's some significant challenges there with that process and making sure that we're cleaning that water to a high standard and then able to reuse it. Most of it, I think, is proposed to be reused in their own plant. But the question of who would fund that, I think, was left blank in that original proposal. And I think that is a big problem. And I'm wondering, my question here with this is, is this in any way linked to that? Are they proposing to, you know, share water resources or, you know, share that facility that's contemplated? I don't even know if it's still contemplated. But do you know if there's any discussion between the two? And I don't even know if they're similar processes or anything.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Olivas, to answer your question, there is no connection between the two companies. They happen to have chosen locations at Mesa del Sol that are compatible, that are close. So I'm sure that there will be overlap in infrastructure, in trunk infrastructure, for sure. I don't have the answers on the funding for the water infrastructure specifically, only that those conversations, separate and apart from the Maxion, for this, to float this particular project, are actively underway at the moment.
Good, good. And I, you know, again, to kind of follow up on the water discussion we had here, I do think definitely before final passage, we need to make sure that we have at least a very solid plan for what water infrastructure looks like, who's responsible for it? Is it developer? Is it some arrangement of government groups? As we were discussing earlier, the Water Utility is not really part of that as a funder because of the no net expense policy. But certainly, they, I know that already on the Maxion proposal, they've put in a lot of resources just in that sort of design and technical analysis and, you know, costing things out and that kind of thing. So they're certainly a partner in that sense. But I do think that we need to make sure that we work very closely with the Water Utility on all of these projects, but especially these big plants that use a lot of water. They might produce the water that's unique in its properties. It's not just, you know, bathrooms and toilets that we're used to seeing. So I just wanted to say that. And I do think that Madam Chair's point about somehow getting this, not just to the technical staff at the Water Utility, but to the board itself, to make sure that those discussions are proactive and that the board understands. Because all the people that sit on the board also sit on this commission or on the city council, which are both involved in this project and similar projects. So I think it makes sense to have that water conversation, even if it's not the IRB per se, but just the conversation, a presentation, whatever that looks like. So, thank you.
Madam Chair, Vice Chair Olivas, we will bring back all of your comments and research them further as these discussions evolve prior to adoption, so that you'll have all of this information.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Casada, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I move for approval for us to move this forward.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Tobias. Item 12, approvals, 12A Parks Recreation and Open Space, Los Vasinos Community Center, the Prose Planning Manager, John Barney, to present.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. John Barney, Planning Manager for Parks Recreation, Open Space. Happy to be here today to talk a little bit about the Los Vasinos Community Center site improvements. I have a site plan I wanted to give everybody a copy of. If you can bring it up also on the screen as well.
You want to pass it?
I may approach.
I'll take one. Thank you. Just passing it. There we go.
Okay. So, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, I'm here to present about Los Vasinos Community Center Park and Site Renovation. So we are looking at about a $4.3 million renovation to the community center landscape, which is, will include basically all the landscape areas that are basically west of the facility. So we'll be replacing the soccer field and actually making a whole soccer field, which it hasn't been. We'll be putting in a loop trail slash path that will also function for special events, much like the Westside Community Center project that we just completed. And also what we'll be doing at Raymond G. and some of our other community centers in the future. We are replacing the basketball court with a full court. There will also be a multi-sport court, so we'll have futsal as well as pickleball. And we'll actually have a separate pickleball court, because the pickleball folks are very engaged in our community center life and use the gym all the time. And they've wanted to have one exclusive court. But they'll also have a series of backer boards. They're very active at our community meetings. And so we have an affectionate name for that. It's going to be the cage for the really competitive pickleball players. So anyway, we also are replacing the skate park, in-ground skate park, as one of S.S.'s members of the Land Grant mentioned earlier, which we're very excited about. It's also in a different location, so hopefully it won't impact our neighbors so much. We're also going to have a storage shed that'll actually be between it and our neighboring properties. So hopefully it'll block light, sound, that kind of thing. And of course, the whole site will now have a security system and security fencing, which will include a gate. So we won't have as many people in there after hours as we've had in the past. So full stage, new, brand-new playground, 5 to 12, and a 2 to 5 playground as well, a series of shade structures with picnic tables. So it's going to be like a full-blown, community-scale park. So we're very excited to have, to be able to do this. In this particular facility, the landscape hasn't had any, the parts of the landscape haven't had any real major significant work since probably the early 2000s. And so we're very excited to get this project going. It is one of the high-priority projects under the Prose Plan from 2016, 2015, excuse me. And like I said, it will be $4.3 million. We've had $400,000 worth of design. There will be a follow-on phase that will include the skate park and also ADA improvements to both sides of the community center, so we can have better ADA access and some parking improvements. Again, just very excited to be making some fixes to that part of the community center site as well, because those are long overdue. And that project will be about 1.3 to 1.5 million. And we have funding from a general fund that has been identified from the general fund, excess fund balance, if I said that right, Madam County Manager. And we'll also be using some capital-outlay funds for that. So anyway, this will be a total makeover of the whole park and landscape facility, long overdue. And we're very excited to be moving forward with that. We'll be, the motion before use to authorize the utilization of the Cooperative Educational Services Agreement to award this contract ultimately will be to Accent Landscaping, who are one of the lead contractors under CES agreement. CES agreements have what's the critical ARPA federal language that we need in order to be able to use the ARPA funds. So we're very excited, again, to have found a contracting mechanism that can expedite the process. So we're very excited, again, to have found a contracting mechanism that can expedite the process and also gives us the lowest pricing that that particular contractor offers anywhere in the state. So with that, I stand for questions.
Any questions? Vice Chair Olivas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. No questions, just lots of love and appreciation for the Pro staff that made this possible. One of the first conversations I had with, as a commissioner, was with John and Director Debbie Jo Almoguer and at the time DCM Enrico Grati, where, you know, I expressed early on that this was, to me, the, the highest priority Pro's project in my district because it's an old community center, it's at the nexus of the city and the land grant and the village. There's so much recreational opportunities that are connected to here, the Tierra Rosario, the open space areas all around it, including Carlito Springs, which is not far. It's just really a, a beautiful site. We're, we've already done a lot of good work there. You've got Roosevelt Middle School and Amon Toya. It's really well-used by kids and by the community alike. The pickleball players are, are alive and well. And this will just really help us thrive even more in the East Mountains. So I'm proud to see this kind of investment in our mountain communities. And just want to, again, say my, my sincere thanks to the Pro staff that made this happen and did so on a, on a really accelerated timeline because of the ARPA deadlines and all those things. But you did it. So thank you so much, really. This is awesome.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I, where's the golf course? I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Look, hey, this reflects a lot of the Westside Community Center. And, you know, it's, that, that community center is very successful. It's very key to the South Valley. And, yeah, it's my honor to support this in the East Mountains as well. They're very successful. And, you know, this is what the people, people always ask, what else do you do with our tax dollars besides throw it at behavioral health and this and that? We do, we do. We, we put a lot of tax dollars into the community and this project here proves that. So congratulations, Commissioner, and congratulations, Parks and Rec. You guys rock and roll. You're the top. So I appreciate you.
Thank you, Commissioner Casado. Thank you, Commissioner Olivas. And thank you, Madam Chair.
I have one, one comment, final comment. Totally support this 100%, 110%. We've talked a lot about addiction and the problems in our community. I truly believe that if we build these kinds of community-focused areas throughout our community, throughout Burnleio County, we are giving alternative opportunities, very positive activities for our youth. And that's really what, what we should be looking at. So I'm really, really 100%, 110% supportive of this. So, any other comments?
Madam Chair, you make a motion for approval?
Second.
Been moved and seconded by four of us. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Barney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioners.
Item 12B, Real Estate Acquisition of 2051 Wyoming Northeast, Ben McIntosh. Sorry.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Good to see you. I'm Ben McIntosh, the Real Estate Manager for Burnleio County. And the item for you tonight is 12B. Real estate is made a motion, requested approval to a motion to authorize expenditures exceeding the county manager's $300,000 threshold pursuant to administrative resolution AR 23-77, the amount of $921,500 for the acquisition of a property located at 2051 Wyoming Northeast. And to authorize the county manager to execute a purchase agreement for the acquisition of 2051 Wyoming Albuquerque. And to authorize the county manager to execute subsequent amendments and all document, all documentation necessary to perfect the title and the proposed property acquisition. The property is being purchased utilizing grant money. The grant was for 1.2 million, so we won't be exceeding that, where the county is acting as the fiscal agent for the purchase. The property is owned MXT and is about 6,945 square feet in size. And with that, and I'm also joined by Kathy Court, if there are some additional questions related to this particular acquisition.
Questions? Vice Chair Olivas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I pulled this off of the consent agenda, not because I have any issue with, with this organization or the location. It's in my district, proud to, proud to have it there, and I plan to support it. I guess really I just wanted to engage in a bit more of a discussion about how we acquire properties, particularly, you know, Kathy and I have had this discussion many times, how we acquire properties for nonprofits. When we're, you know, I think we are often approached, that's probably an understatement, by nonprofits to purchase facilities, to purchase vehicles, all those types of things. And so, you know, it's just sort of, I wanted to use this as an opportunity to have a bit more of a discussion as the commission about sort of how we prioritize those purchases. Because we're not just committing to sort of helping with this one, which is funded by, by a grant. But again, it, it, you know, reiterates that precedent and it also puts us on the hook for future improvements to the property, future maintenance to the property. What if this provider decides they don't want this anymore, they move on? We're stuck with a building. We're not landlords, we're not really in the business of that. So, you know, then what do we do with it? I just wanted to really engage in that discussion a little bit more and ask just a little bit more about that process, how we ensure that that's fair. And, you know, how do we sort of keep the floodgates from swinging open?
Certainly. And I think, I think Kathy Court may be the best to answer that.
Everything you said is absolutely true, accurate, and something we should be considering as a county. I will tell you that it depends on the capital outlay grant, whether we're going to be able to prioritize it at all. So number one, with this particular capital outlay grant, we were able to convince DFA that we are not violating anti-donation because we are going to actually own this building, to your point. But of course, that question leads to what other nonprofits are going to ask us to purchase a building and actually be able to receive the funding from lawmakers? Because this particular nonprofit got the funding, $1.2 million, from various lawmakers to provide a grant for, for that nonprofit to buy a building. A former, the former administration committed to this particular nonprofit that, yeah, we'll, we'll do that for you. The challenge my team and I have, and of course, I would welcome further discussions with the commission, is what is the extent of ownership we are willing to take on on behalf of nonprofits in the realm of land and buildings? I will tell you that in the trainings that we are now doing with nonprofits, and all of you know about the training that we're doing on Friday and Tuesday for this latest crop of nonprofits, we actually tell nonprofits that we are not willing to take on land or building purchases, nor are we able to take on renovations of properties that do not belong to Burnleio County. Number one, it's because the land and the building footprint that we're taking on. And to your point, you know, we become owners of the land and the buildings, which taxes our staff and our general fund, frankly, to your point. We say no to land and buildings. And, and if lawmakers on their own decide to give money to a nonprofit that's lobbying for that funding, we are the only county that is willing and able to serve as fiscal agent. City of Albuquerque will not do this. City of Santa Fe does not do this. San Val County rarely does it. Grants, they won't do, they won't touch any of this. So most, there are only three counties in the state of New Mexico that entertain fiscal agency for nonprofits. And it's Dona Ana, us, and San Juan County. So, and it's for this reason. Where do we say no? Where do we stop? Where do we limit? How do we limit? And I can tell you that even though I say in our trainings, we just can't do this for you, we don't have a clear process by which to approve such things. If lawmakers give the money, I feel obligated to honor that commitment without any real direction from, in an EI or anything like that. So I feel a commitment to honor it. However, based on the last two years, now I can at least say, if we are outright owning this land or outright owning this building, we're going to be able to convince DFA to release and execute the grant for us. When it comes to renovations and such, or building on a piece of land that we don't own, my experience is this, it becomes a complicated anti-donation mess. It goes into the legal realm. My team feels the pinch because everybody's asking us for questions, but DFA isn't executing the grant. And it becomes a legal issue where our lawyers are spending hours trying to work with DFA and BOF, Board of Finance lawyers, sometimes the Attorney General's Office. So if we take on land or building purchases and we actually have enough money to do that in a grant, then, you know, our teams are wanting to build in to lease agreements that they are responsible for maintenance. So that, that becomes a conversation with lawyers, you know? So in a nutshell, this grant, particular grant, we were able to get executed by promising DFA, this is our land, you shouldn't be able to control what we're buying and purchasing because this grant is really Burnleio County's grant. But we are going to enter into lease agreement with this particular agency and we showed them what the lease agreement is going to look like. And because of that, they, they executed the grant. But I've got other grants that aren't being executed. So, so further guidance from the commission, I would completely appreciate. I will tell you that if we go down this road of acquiring land and buildings for nonprofits, and they all deserve it, they're all doing great work. I love working with our nonprofit organizations. They are doing things we can't do as a government. And we've got a group of lawmakers trying to change the anti-donation law and I'm on that committee, working with that group. But it's a tricky situation, you know? How, how do you go around that? Do you revise it? Do you expand it? Do you put a pot of money for nonprofits and let the state take care of it? You know, there are those conversations that are happening. There isn't really a political will to get that done so far. The housing situation might make that a political will, a reality with affordable housing and such. I'm kind of hopeful for that. But I, I just don't know how to tell lawmakers no. If I get enough money, I'm going to try and honor that grant. My team, though, is going to need to expand. We're already feeling the crunch. I will tell you that when we acquire any capital outlay for any nonprofit, my team has to record every bit, every item we purchase. We have to check on it every year. We have reporting and accounting that has to be done twice a year. We've got inventory that will be ours forever. And I'm thinking that we need to expand the CIP team to add a nonprofit, another two people to help. Just with the appropriations we have right now, that total about $19 million plus past nonprofits. So it is a daunting task and my team is stretched beyond capacity at this point. Two people doing it with me jumping in to help. And it's a ton of work and it's long-lasting. This stuff is ours forever. We cannot convey property to any of the nonprofits because of the GASP gap requirements, because of the anti-donation law. So everything we've purchased, even a stupid refrigerator back in 2015, we're still having to go out, check that it's still there. They're still giving us reports for a refrigerator we bought back in 2015. And we're going to do that with every nonprofit and everything that we have purchased for these nonprofits. It's huge. It's a huge task. So I've talked to interim county manager about expanding staff for my team. And I see actually a nonprofit team within the CIP structure that is just dealing with everything from the beginning, RFPs, all the way to inventory in perpetuity until a nonprofit says, I don't want this thing anymore. So I'm sorry, I don't think I answered your question about process. I just think we take what we get and we try and work with it. But I think I would defer to the commission. If you want to look at our current AI, we have one back from 2017. And that one actually said we would not accept any vehicles or information technology purchases. We wouldn't do that. But we do it now. You know, we do it. So I'm, I'm absolutely open to working with all of you, one of you, to update, revise, look at this, ask these questions. But for right now, I just honor what my team gets in the best way I can and the best way my team can. So.
Madam Chair. I, I think you answered the question as, as best anyone could, as far as, you know, sort of what we do and where we're going. I think Commissioner Casado will, will like this because I think what this really is is an issue where the state needs to step up. He often speaks about that, you know, the state needing to step up and solve some of these issues, help with these challenges. Because, I mean, really, the way I see this is it's an unfunded mandate. Actually giving us this money is more of a tax because we're given sort of the initial capital burst, but then we have to follow up all throughout the process to maintain it, to track it, all the, the steps in between. And I believe our, our administrative resolution on this specifies that there's going to be a 3% fee or something like that levied on all the nonprofits. I think we can all understand how that's maybe a little bit untenable, looks kind of bad to say, you know, to the, the service provider that's providing counseling or Wings for Life that, that's sort of doing, I can't think of the word here, but job skills training. We're going to tax them, we're going to ask them to, to pay. But at the same time, you know, they're, they're very clearly benefiting from the service that the county's providing, that your staff is providing. And, you know, the, the legislature's really only providing one-time hits for this stuff that requires either ongoing lobbying efforts on the part of these organizations in the county. And so what it really needs is a state-level solution. And so, you know, grateful for our work together that, that we've been working on over the last year to try to address some of these anti-donation clause issues. Unfortunately, we've lost two of our sponsors that, that have termed out of the legislature or they will at the end of this year. So that, that group is, I won't say it's totally decimated, but it's definitely weakened by losing those, those champions. And so we're going to have to rebuild. But I think it's just an issue that, that I hope the commission continues to engage in. I know you're, you and your staff are deeply involved and engaged in it. But we, we have to do the right thing. We have to help these nonprofits and help solve some of these issues. But we've got to push harder on the state to step up and do the right thing and find a better process that's, by the way, more fair to those rural communities. Because what you just told us is essentially that two of the three largest urban centers are the only places you can go as a nonprofit to do this kind of work. So we wonder why there's a physician shortage or a services shortage in our rural communities. This is part of it, right? You can't get funding from the state to buy anything because you don't have a fiscal sponsor. It's a big problem and look forward to continuing to work on it.
Thank you. Commissioner Barbola.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioner Olivas, for the questions. And thank you all for such hard work. I agree with everything that's been said. And I, I agree both with the approach that we have to staff. Like, we're not, I don't, I wouldn't vote to ever stop doing this because it's part of the social safety net. But I know that we need the staff to cover it. And if we should get money from the state for that, we should prioritize it in our budgets as well. But definitely get money from the state for that. And so, yeah, I'm in for any way we can help make this happen. And, and I do think the state should have their own board because, like we're mentioning, you know, the other rural communities that are in even greater need and never get any access to these dollars. So maybe we have a model to share. But thank you for your hard work and helping us get this. I did have one question. So it looks like, you know, if you said they got 1.2 million, we're almost at a million just with the purpose of this, purchase of this land. So they're going to have to figure out money for a building? Or is there a building on there that'll be renovated?
There is an existing building on the property. It's about 6,945 square feet.
Okay.
And we have done all of the due diligence related to the building, had it inspected and reviewed. And all the systems are, are in good functional condition.
Great. Thank you. And for future, just may I, if I may add, it's like the Highland Theater because we're going to own this. Wings for Life can advocate for more update, renovation money, that kind of thing. And because we own this-
for more update, renovation money, that kind of thing. And because we own this building, um, if they secure funding, we're able to use that to do the updates and that kind of thing. So, um, it's ours and it allows us to do the renovations that are, that are needed if Wings for Life is able to secure the funding. We will not lobby for it, but the Wings, Wings for Life, they're good at doing that. So.
So, a motion?
I move approval.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you. Have a great evening.
And, uh, finally, item thirteen, announcement of the next commission meeting will be Tuesday, August twenty-seventh. The Board of Finance at four P M. in these chambers. And also Tuesday, August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, the administrative meeting at five P M. in these chambers. And we are adjourned. Thank you all.